Good morning, members of council and staff. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, for Tuesday, October the 12th, nine o'clock, even though it does seem like Monday morning. I trust everyone had some turkey and a good Thanksgiving. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of former Elgin County Warden Bud Mar. Bud served on Elgin County Council for eight years as both Deputy Reeve and a Reeve of the Township of Southold. Bud was Warden in 1983 and 1984. He was a dedicated public servant and will be greatly missed. Anyone that knew him knows that's very true, so please take a moment to remember Bud. Thank you. All right, we have some minutes to adopt from September the 28th. I trust everyone has had a chance to look at them, satisfied with them. Errors are emissions. If not, I entertain a motion to adopt them. Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Councillor Purcell. I will call the vote, all in favor. And that carries, thank you. I will remind everyone of disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. See none, so vote that. Presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. And I'm not aware of any, so we'll move on from that. Motion to move into committee, the whole, please. By Councillor Jones, second by Councillor Martin. Everyone ready for the question, all in favor? That passes, thank you. Reports of council outside boards and staff. Director. Director Holmes and Senior Services?
The Warden's.
Yeah, that's where I should have an agenda, should read it. Yes, the first up is the wardens. Trust you already, if there are any questions, I will try to answer. Seemed like a busy year, a busy week, month. If there are no questions, I entertain a motion to receive and file. Councillor McPhail, Councillor Jones. I'll call the question, all in favor. Carries. Director of Homes now. Director of Homes and Senior Services. Infection Control Policy 2.10, immunization, staff COVID-19, 2.23 pandemic prevention and control, staff testing administration policy 1.35, visitors and resident absences during a pandemic. Michelle, you're up, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Before you, as the report, as you mentioned, on September 28th, council approved the policy that I brought forward on the Homes Infection Control Policy 2.10 on immunization for staff COVID-19. That policy included mandatory COVID-19, full immunization of all staff, students, and volunteers with a date of November 30th. However, on October 1st, the Ministry of Long-Term Care issued an updated directive on policy regarding COVID-19 immunization for long-term care homes, which included the date of November 15th, so a couple of weeks earlier than my policy date. This policy is applicable to all staff, students, volunteers, and now also includes support workers. So support workers are all of our contracted workers, our delivery persons, our maintenance persons that come into the home to ensure structural integrity and functionality of things like HVAC, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all those systems and services. So the following applies to all of those individuals. Provide proof of fall, so all required doses of COVID-19 vaccination by November 15th, so the second dose November 15th. In order to meet that, the policy presented to you today includes the first dose date by October 17th. All staff, students, support workers, and volunteers who choose not to show proof by the deadline will not be permitted to enter the home to work, train, or volunteer. The piece around unpaid leave, if staff fail to provide and meet that deadline for medical exemption and/or for full required all doses of COVID-19 vaccination is maintained in the policy. Additionally, the Minister's Directive COVID-19 Long-Term Care Surveillance Testing Access to Homes Policy has been updated to include the introduction of randomized rapid antigen test for fully immunized individuals. So this is effective this Friday, October 15th. It is a weekly testing, and it will be different days of the week as per the ministry directive. Additionally, to align with the Ministry of Long-Term Care COVID-19 Guidance Document for Long-Term Care Homes, minor revisions to the Homes Administration Policy, 1.35 visitor and resident absences have been made, a number of visits, and that includes changes such as the number of visitors permitted, screening and testing, and absence and isolation requirements, all of which have been fully implemented as required. The policy updates before you align with the ministry directives and the guidance documents. Staff has developed plans to operationalize and implement the required ministry directive, and we're working very closely with the Human Resource Department to implement a staffing plan to support any potential staffing impacts and to support quality resident care and services. Just an update for council, our active staff full vaccination rates by home, Bobier Villa is currently at 93.5%. Algen Manor has increased to 91%, and Terrace Lodge is currently at 79.5%. There's two recommendations before council today. First, that the report be received and filed, and second, that council approve the adoption of the policy changes to the three noted homes policies. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll open the floor for questions for Michelle's comments. I have not seen, okay, we got one, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know the number, or the percentage, Michelle, what does that mean in actual numbers across the three homes?
I apologize, I don't have that directly in front of me. We are certainly showing improvements. If you look at 396 staff across the homes, and I guess 92, or sorry, 91% at Algen Manor, 93.5, 79.5, if we did a calculation. So that's 21 and 7 and 8, so around 30, just over 30 some percent, so. I don't have that number right in front of me, and it varies across departments, so there's, it'll look different at each home, whether it's nursing, or dietary, or housekeeping departments.
And what was it prior to passing the directive?
So last, at last council, I believe that Terrace Lodge was at 76.5%, around that range. Algen Manor was at 89%, and Bobier Villa was at 92%. So we have seen some movement. We also have had some staff come forward to indicate that they plan to get their first dose, and that was after the last, so September 28th, I sent a communication to staff regarding the policy. On October 1st, I sent them an update, letting them know that the ministry has provided updated directives, and I was going to be bringing an updated policy to council. So we have had a handful across each of our homes that have indicated that they plan to meet those, the directive, and that they had, were making arrangements to get their first dose. So we know that there's individuals that were willing to move forward to meet the policy requirements, and hopefully we'll continue to see improvement there.
Okay, thanks, Michelle, we're moving in the right direction.
We are.
Good comments. All right, we have two recommendations to receive and file. Secondary, please. Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Councillor Martin. Ready for the question? Both recommendations in this? Okay, both recommendations. I'll call a vote, all in favor. Carries, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next report is our Fire Training Officer, Community Emergency Management Coordinator, Algen Middlesex Regional Fire School, update. Good morning, Jeff.
Morning, Mr. Warden, members of council. This report is being brought forward to give you guys an update as to where we are with the training partnership and some of the courses that we can pull out. So while our official rollout of fire college courses doesn't start until April of 2022, we have been able to run numerous courses through 2021 so far, based on the need and the recommendation by the local fire chiefs for those courses. So in 2021, so far, we've been able to roll out five courses that are NFPA certified, fully sanctioned, and we have another five scheduled for the remainder of 2021. With those courses, we have had all seven of the Algen County, like local municipal partners, have had students within those courses, and there is a chart provided in the report that just lays out those numbers of students based on each municipality. We've also had a large support from Middlesex County municipalities and from some of the other supporting municipalities, such as Oneida and First Nations on the Thames, so local area, we can provide a need that's in the area to support them. So while 2021 has been, in my opinion, successful as far as courses go, as far as supporting the municipalities and need goes, 2022 does have some very exciting things moving forward. So because of COVID, a lot of municipalities had a bit of a reduced recruitment, reduced hiring, based on some of the COVID requirements. So we do have 80 recruit firefighters starting in January of 2022 within our recruit class. So we're actually running two recruit classes starting in January to fill that need. We've also been selected by the Ontario Fire Marshal to run three pilot programs, which are new programs never offered before in the province, that they would like to be offered in a local area that has, has influx of students, that has support from the municipalities. So that's a very exciting feature for us. And then we also have, through the fire chiefs, we've developed a course list of about 40 courses that are Ontario Fire College courses, and then another 20 that are specific to Algen and Middlesex that will roll out in 2022. And this is based on certification needs through the fire chiefs in the area. We have been told, it has been released to the Fire Chiefs Association that mandatory certification is coming back. They expect it to be announced before the end of this year, so that will be a big impact. Last time it was rolled out, it was, it was a lot of fear within the fire service. I think that with some of the infrastructure and some of the systems we've placed throughout this process, all of our municipalities will be in very good shape for that mandatory certification coming forward. So financially, while we are based on a cost recovery basis through our local municipal partners, we do make a small profit off of outside departments, but that is all put back into paying tax books and some of the equipment or supplies that we need to run the courses. While the profit, or while the financial benefits aren't on the county side, there's fairly substantial financial benefits to the local municipalities. So I did provide a breakdown chart of one of the municipalities that has sent 35 students to courses throughout 2021. They've spent just over $3,000 on registration or cost recovery to us, or if they had have sent those students to an outside agency, they would have been up between the $14 and $17,000 mark. So while the, we don't necessarily see a large financial impact on the county side, there is extensive benefits to each municipality that's involved, and allows them to stretch those budget dollars further. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the program or about where we are moving forward.
I'll open the floor for questions for Jeff, I will make a comment, Jeff. You know, Central Elgin has four stations, and I, we're close to around the 100, and I think, like all places, you know, it's a struggle to get some, that is a substantial saving, so I know, I appreciate it, same with, sure, for Mayor Martin. It's just exciting news. We often say good report, but this is a very exciting report, so good. Questions for Jeff. Councillor Jones.
Just another, the same comments, this has been exciting, to say the least. Southold is very appreciative of the direction we've gone here, it's a huge cost saving, it's also time saving for our volunteers. It's going to help retain and attract new volunteers because of the time savings of less travel and whatnot, thank you.
Councillor McPhail.
Just following up on the COVID policy, does the fire school have a protocol in place for those coming from other jurisdictions?
So as far as vaccination status goes, we're based on each individual municipality's policy and where we're doing those programs. So some of our municipalities do have, that we've taught out of, do have varying vaccination policies, so that'll be based on that. As far as the county policy goes, because we're not doing any training in county facilities, we actually don't fall into the county vaccination policy. So what I will say on that, though, we do work very closely with public health. We have a substantial screening form that we do for every student coming in. Public health has given us our parameters for spacing, class sizes, things of that nature, and then the meals that we provide have to be individually packaged meals, so we can't do a buffet style, you know, has to be all individually packed. So while we don't, we don't have an individual vaccination policy, we do have fairly strict vaccination and COVID rules that we follow.
Further comments? All right, good job, Jeff. I'm looking for a motion to receive. By Jones, second by Martin. Call the vote, all in favor? That's unanimous. Good job, thank you, Jeff. Move on to Director Financial Services Accounting Internship. Jim, are you there? There he is. Good morning. Whenever you're ready.
Before you use a report on a potential internship here at the county, Financial Services, Fanchow has a co-op program with the intent of that program is to provide its students with real-world experience to help them grow as a student. Financial Services could provide a placement for such a student with somebody who is interested in becoming a CPA in the future. Fanchow's upcoming internship term begins in January and runs through April. That happens to coincide with when the county is launching its human capital management initiative, which is upgrading our timekeeping, our payroll, and our HR software applications. The costs of an internship would be about $15,000, which includes also the benefit costs. The advantage of doing this, and as I'm sure you're, you've all seen it, there's potential retirements coming up in the future across various municipalities, as our workforce ages, and developing a talent pool of CPAs that have experience in local government is something that some of our municipalities may very well be able to take advantage of in the near future. Recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed, that the cost for the program be added to the budget, $2,000, that an accounting intern be hired between January and April of next year, and that the CAO on board be authorized to sign a work term agreement with the, with the college.
Thank you, Jim. Questions, comments, please. Councillor McPhail.
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you. Are there a good number of candidates that are willing to participate in this program?
Well, that remains to be seen. I have heard of someone who's actually working as a screener at one of the homes right now that's interested, and I've been communicating with the college, and they have, they have enacted programs, I don't imagine that there'll be any issues with finding candidates.
Which leads me to my next question, is that in today's day and age, to find that specialized person, I think we're unfortunately going to have to grow them ourselves. And is this program, is it open to lower-tier municipalities to take advantage of too?
The internship program?
Yes.
Yes, most certainly.
Are, I wonder, are they aware of you, you spoke to Treasurers about this, that this program is there, and maybe it's something that you might want to think about bringing some?
I'll certainly bring it up at the next Treasurers' meeting.
Okay, thank you.
That's an excellent point, because there's certainly need across the county. Further comments? Dominique, go ahead. Councillor Jagir. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question, so this would be an additional cost, we're adding $15,000 to the budget, and so is there a deadline from Fanchow that forces us to sort of circumvent a little bit our budgeting planning process for 2022?
No, there's, it would just be a matter of us then posting and, and doing interviews in line with bringing somebody in in January, that's the timeline that we're facing. But certainly, we can begin the process, and if the committee were to say, we're not going to, we're not going to add this to the budget, we could, we could hold off on off, and issuing a job offer until we have approval through the committee, if that's deemed necessary.
Go ahead.
Thank you, just a follow-up. In addition to cultivating relationship and the talent pool, does it save us, does it save one of our other staff work as well, does it release someone from other duties? So I'm looking at other advantages for us.
Well, one of the reasons that we were looking at doing it at this time is because we're not normally rolling out a major software system, and this is a very large system, the HCM, it's encompassing everything from timekeeping to payroll, to scheduling, to HR components. And so it's going to be a very intense period for us, and so to be able to offload some of that work onto an additional staff member, being the intern student, that's definitely going to be helpful, and we will, will make us more successful in launching the software program.
Thank you.
Further comments?
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Jim, when is the next Budget Committee meeting?
The Budget Committee meeting is on the last Tuesday of October, which I believe is the 26th.
If I may, Mr. Warden, just in follow-up to Councillor Jagir's question, perhaps there is an opportunity to present this to the Budget Committee at the end of October for consideration by the Budget Committee and by extension by County Council as part of the 2022 budget deliberations, understanding and appreciating the expedited timelines associated with onboarding an intern, if appropriate. So is that, am I kind of getting at what you're?
Yeah, I think that would be my recommendation, possible.
Ready to make that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. To a secondary for Councillor Jagir's, Councillor French. Any further discussion? We have the motion. Do you want to read it, so we're sure, clear?
Sure. Be it resolved that the October 12th, 2021 report titled Accounting Internship, submitted by the Director of Financial Services, be received and filed for information, and that $15,000 for wages and benefit costs for an accounting internship be considered by the Budget Committee at the October 24th, 2021 meeting?
26.
26. 2021 meeting, and further considered by Algen County Council as part of their 2021 budget deliberation.
2022.
Sorry, 2022.
All right, everyone's clear on that, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Next up, General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise, Fragmities Roadside Spraying Program Update. Morning, Brian, go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Warden, good morning, council, through you to council. As you're well aware, since 2020, Elgin County has been actively identifying and spraying Fragmities along its roadsides in an effort to eradicate the surrogates of vegetation. This information report recommended to be received and filed notes based on staff's findings, that in our second year, a vegetation reduction of nearly 30% has been realized. Staff expects further vegetation reductions in future years, and the need to maintain ongoing budget investment. A special note, the municipality of Central Elgin, township of Southold, and municipality of Bayham participated in this year's collaborative joint procurement effort administered by county staff. With that, be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments for Brian? Deputy Ward, go ahead.
Brian, the map that has got the orange dots on it, is that showing where it's existing, or is that showing where it's been sprayed?
Both, so this year's location, Fragmities patches that have been sprayed, and it has identified.
It just appears like there's more in the west than there is in the east.
That is the case, yeah.
Further comments? I'm here, oh, Councillor Ketchbot, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. In some places along the county roads in Bayham, obviously, the roadside or road allowances where these patches exist and are being taken care of, and it's showing, but there are often adjacent private parcels, and I think we've asked this before, but I'm going to just confirm, should those individuals be willing to participate? Could they onboard with the county program to get their patches adjacent to road allowances sprayed as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That makes a lot of sense. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, it's, yeah, it's, even Southold, we're seeing, starting to see an improvement, and obviously, we're not getting the calls that we were in previous years, and that's, that's a good thing, so obviously, the public are happier with what's happening now.
Take that as good news, we're going in the right direction. Moving to secondary for the report, Fail, Jones. Further questions? Call the vote, all in favor? And against, Carries, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Next up, Chief Administrative Officer, COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, September update. Julie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an update on the county's COVID-19 operational response. Two items to note specifically, one is the Algen County Administration Building is no longer only open by appointment only, we are fully open to the public. All visitors are screened at the main entrance upon arrival, and the emergency management team has ensured that all county facilities are COVID secure, and we have conducted risk assessments to ensure practical safety measures are in place, along with our corporate safety plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions through Julie, comments? Not seen any. Moving to secondary, please. Councillor Martin and Deputy Warden Mennel. We'll call the vote, all in favor. That's Carries, thank you. Move on to council correspondence. Number one, items for consideration? Not seen any. Item two, items for information consent agenda. It's a letter from Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding the expiry of temporary regulations. There's a news release from the Province of Ontario regarding the announcement of eight new Ontario Health Teams and Western Ontario Wardens Caucus with their monthly update. Are there any questions or comments on them?
I'd just like to note that Algen is now officially an Ontario Health Team, and a lot of the credit must go to Robert Byron, who really pushed and worked very hard at leading that charge, now he's retired, so Karen Davies will be helping, but it's, it's a whole group effort, it's not just one, but Robert has worked extremely hard, and we're very thankful for the work, because he believes strongly in it.
So noted, thank you for that. Further comments? Are we prepared to accept them as a, as a whole? For that, Councillor?
Move to receive, items one, two, and three.
Thank you. And Councillor Ketchbot, seconds. All in favor, please. That Carries, thank you. On to other business, statements, inquiries by members. Not seen any, notice of motion. Matters of urgency. Hope not. All right. All right. Those meeting items, are there already? Motion to go into closed session. Moved by Jones, second by French. All right, we are back. Looking for motion to rise and report. Close session. Okay, Jones, second by Ketchball. Ready for the question? All in favor? You're back in open session. We have to adopt.
No, I'll run through the rising reports.
Okay, please. First one?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So for closed session, item number one, be it resolved that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Looking for a mover and second. Ketchball. And Jagir. Are we ready to, all in favor, please? Carries, thank you. Next.
For closed session, item number two, which is organizational update. Be it resolved that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Mennel, second by French. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Next.
Closed session, item number three, which was also an organizational update. Be it resolved that the report from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise and the Chief Administrative Officer be received.
Moved by Martin, second by Jagir. All in favor, please? Against that carries. Thank you. All right. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole. Moved by Jones, second by French. Questions, comments, ready for the vote? All in favor, please? And that carries. Thank you. Consideration of bylaws?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw 21-37, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Algen at the October 12th, 2021 meeting.
Moved by Mennel, second by Purcell. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Well, I'm at the bottom of my page. Thank you for your attention, everyone. And as always, stay safe. But I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Jones, second by Martin. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.